Great. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:02 PM and I'll now call this Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next up is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on September 18th, 2024.
I make a motion to approve those.
Okay, thank you both. Any errors, changes, or omissions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
As I was not at the last meeting, I'm abstaining from this.
Okay. And one abstention. Thank you. Alright. Next up is communications and correspondence. I have one item. I've been, we've been very busy and I received this back in September. I just want to read this letter just to make you all aware of it. This is from of this event, Governor Lamont established the America 250 Connecticut Commission, which has been charged to provide assistance to municipalities for the development of programs, projects, and activities pertaining to the American Revolution. We're reaching out today with an update on how Portland may participate. Many cities and towns have created local committees to begin work of planning commemorative activities. We encourage Portland to consider doing so as well. The most comprehensive committees will bring together various perspectives, librarians, historians, economic development leaders, business owners, town clerks, representatives of social justice, environmental, and/or DEI groups, etc. Once completed, please let us know who the best point of contact is. We will continue to share information about programs, funding opportunities, and promotional guidelines as we move forward. In addition to any independent work your local committee may do, we invite you to participate in two statewide activities over the next two years. First, the commission will develop a resolution recommending recommitting to the ideals of the Declaration of Independence, which we hope all of Connecticut's municipalities will adopt on or around July 4th, 2025. Then on July 4th, 2026, we will host a recommitment ceremony at Connecticut's Old State House in Hartford, where representatives from all 169 municipalities will be invited to come together like the nation did 250 years ago and sign a copy of this resolution. Further information will be shared about these activities in the coming months, and you can learn more about this at www.ct250.org-local. And this is signed Denise Merrill, who is the former Secretary of the State. And so I think it's a, it's a good thing that we participate in. I'm sure you'll all agree. So at some point, I'll be bringing a resolution to create a formal committee. I wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. And if anyone has any people that you have in mind to serve on that, I think maybe start talking to the respective town committees and, and start thinking about who could serve on this now. So we'll be looking for volunteers.
Just a quick point of information. I was involved in that in 1976. My father was part of the committee. And just to give you an idea of what they did back then, Peterson Oil, that owns the building, I'm not sure the company that's in there now right next door to the doctor's office across the street, the Peterson folks offered a room up for the town to use. And this was prior to the town actually having a historical society building, but they put on a years-long, a year-long display of historical memorabilia in there amongst other stuff. So there definitely was a committee back, back in the day when they did it in, in 1976. So just something good to keep an eye on. I'm sure there's information out there in the town hall.
I would think so, yeah. To ask Michael about that in the clerk's office. Yeah. Thank you, John. Alright, so that's all I had for communications and correspondence. So we'll move to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience this evening? Alright, I don't see anyone online. So we will move on to item number seven, which is a resolution to call special town meeting, a, a special town meeting on October 23rd regarding the sale of the decommissioned 1948 Mack Antique Pumper Fire Truck. And so what happened was, we had scheduled a special town meeting and it was a holiday. It was Rosh Hashanah last week and per our regulations, we don't hold meetings on that date. And so I think we normally meet on the first Wednesday and we were thrown off a little bit at our last meeting. So we need to reschedule that meeting. And so I'm proposing that we hold it at 6:40 PM at our next regular meeting, which will be October 23rd.
I second.
Do we have to?
We have to move the, move the resolution.
Yeah, do we have to read it again?
We don't, I don't, we did.
We read it last time, yeah.
You want to read it again?
Sure, if you want to move it.
I'll move it. Resolution Board of Selectmen Town of Portland dated October 9th, 2024, resolution to call special town meeting. Whereas honor about 1982, the members of Portland Volunteer Fire Department Company Two raised funds for the purpose of restoring the decommissioned 1948 Mack Antique Pumper Fire Truck called Mack Number Four, of which took approximately three years to complete and cost around $35,000. Whereas while continuously being stored at PB, Portland Volunteer Fire Department Company Two Firehouse, members made all repairs and maintenance on the Mack Number Four. Whereas the members of Portland Volunteer Company Two have officially requested to purchase the 1948 Mack Antique Pumper Fire Truck for the purpose of using it at fire department events such as parades and functions as a casket coach. Be it resolved that the transfer of ownership of the 1948 Mack Antique Pumper Fire Truck for the consideration of $1 is hereby recommended and shall be submitted to a special town meeting to be held on October 23rd, 2024. In accordance with the attached warning, a special town meeting, which is also hereby approved, a copy of the full text of the resolution shall be available for public inspection at the town clerk's office.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on this? Alright. 6:40.
6:40.
6:40 PM. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we will hold that special meeting in two weeks from today. So thank you. So next up is item eight on the agenda, which is our monthly budget report. Our Finance Director, Tom Robinson, is with us this evening. And he will provide that report.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Tom.
So let's start off with the revenues. So on the revenue account ending in object 0010, property tax current, we're budgeted $32 million, $68,000. We have received today $18 million, 041, 169. So we're only about 43% remaining. We have the big push that will come in January. Prior year, object ending 00011, budgeted $270,000. Actual right now is about 134,550. So 50% remaining, also coming in strong. Property rental, 00303, budgeted about $500,000. And actual, 307,980 has come in, 38% remaining. Most, some of those Brownstone Exploration Parks within there, Oak Hills in there, a little bit of mercy of some rental property here. 0328 Structural Permits was budgeted at 349, 431,563. Coming in about over $82,000, doing very well. There was a few items that came in above where we expected and came in this fiscal year when there was a possibility of having it come in prior fiscal year. 0354, which is other revenue, is a $20,000 budget line item. So for today, we have received 18,363. And of note, this year, Kerma did provide a distribution to members equity to us. Last year, we didn't have that. This year, it was 16,223. So we have for revenues. On expenditures, on page five, just to go through some areas of just things that we should look at and watch as we go through the year. On the police budget, 0233108, there still is a power DMS bill that needs to be paid. The terms of that agreement have to be negotiated. There was a three-year initial term. This will be year four of that term. It's about 11. We have budgeted 28,761. 17,389 has been spent to date on various licenses. 11,186 is left. So doing pretty good, but just one of those ones to watch. Next one is conference meetings and dues, which also kind of equates to training. So that's 02332,000 is the object. The department is 023. Object is 32,000. Budgeted 10,500, spent to date 36,09. Encumbered to date 24,50. We have about 4,411 left at this point. There's quite a few recertifications and trainings that we, we have, have still ahead of us. So those is, these rules continue to come together, you know, we try to gather how much of these costs over the years. Trainings are quite expensive as well. So they're, you know, we're going to watch that number, but there's also been some shift in personnel, which had other various certifications in there required. 025 on page six, we have a part-time payroll number. We have zero budgeted there. We have about 3,900 used to date. Our building official was out on a leave, so we needed to put a part-time person or multiple people in that position to help, to help get the, get us through that time period. Page six, 032, 31,000 service contracts. That's Highway Department. Budgeted is 9,500, spent to date is 2,00945. Encumbered is 4,972. We're, we're so far under budget at 1,583. A few things have come up from when the initial budget occurred. There was overhead door services for about $2,500. That was a contract that we used to have a while back. We had gotten away from that, but it's, you know, we should have, we, on certain areas and certain locations, we should have those for a safety precaution and to make sure that the doors are maintained properly. So that's about a 2,500 for a vendor offstate contract. The fuel management system that we had put in this year, there is a service agreement that has to go with that management system. So that was something that was not really thought of when we were doing the budget, that we're going to put into this year. The, the Highway Department Garage has a, a new highway, a new system in there for the fire, fire security. So we have a, have to add a fire protection service agreement on that as well. That's about 1,099 a year. So that's, this is one of the budgets that there's a possibility we may need to budget slightly, a little bit more because there's a few new type of, types of service contracts that, that are kind of, are occurring and are continuing. 03236006 is line painting. This, it's, we usually stay within this budget or, or below. This year, it appears we're going, we're over on this line already. There was quite a bit of chip seal throughout the process in last year, and then therefore the painting of the lines of this year. There was multiple roads that were resurfaced. And also, it's like, there's a timing issue on when those, when those paintings get done. A few of the streets, GPW Director O'Halpin decided to utilize the higher epoxy. It's a, it's an epoxy base. It's a little bit brighter for High Street and the crosswalks on Russell and Main Street. Those haven't been completed yet. I think that's what they're waiting on, is for that high epoxy to be, come in. But, so those are slightly higher than they were, but hopefully will provide better travel, more safe street line painting. 033, page seven, which is vehicle maintenance, 03361001 uniforms. That one, we are right at the number, but we do, we did have a retirement in this department recently. And so the, there'll be a new assistant mechanic, as the assistant mechanic was promoted to the head mechanic. So there'll likely be another $650 for the new employee to obtain uniforms. Highway will likely have a similar issue later in the year. Right now, it's not showing as there's quite a bit more highway members in there than, than the smaller vehicle maintenance department. But there are at least two positions that have changed, a truck driver and an operator. So though, there's a, you know, likely a 650 and 650 additional for the two new employees. That's what I have for an update.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions?
Next one?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Alright, if there's no questions, we'll move on to item nine, which is appointments to boards and commissions.
I believe there is an appointment.
Yes, we have one for the Veteran Affairs Committee to move Dave Rutter from alternate to full member.
I'll second that.
Alright. Any discussion on that?
Good God.
Yep.
You do well.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you to Dave. Great. Anything else? No? Okay. If not, we'll move on to refunds of excess payments.
Make a motion for a refund of excess payment for Vault Trust, $709.58.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.
Refund of excess payment, James R. Coughlin, $143.8.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.
Make a motion for a refund of excess payment for Toyota Lease Trust, $690.10 and $582.98.
I'll second both of them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, David A. Hanrahan, $713.69 and $68.52.
I'll second both.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Andrew G. Ives, $77.42.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Julie and Mark Maxod, $17.46.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Fairways Golf Incorporated, $66.16.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Honda Lease Trust, $205.64.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Allison M. Ingram, $121.57.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payments, CoreLogic Centralized Refunds, $7,477.92.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you. So we'll move right on to status reports. And I just want to remind everyone, we do have an executive session this evening on the fixed assessment agreement at Brainerd Place. So we'll get to that shortly. I have a number of updates. I wanted to go through and give a thorough update this evening to start off with personnel matters. And I do have some unfortunate news to share with the board this evening, is I did receive the resignation of our Public Works Director, Ryan O'Halpin, yesterday. And so that's a, it's a loss for the town. Ryan's done a terrific job for us. Unfortunately, a, his phone rang and his old company made him an offer that the town could not compete with. And so we wish Ryan well. His last day is going to be November 1st, but he has committed to staying on in a part-time basis, approximately five hours a week to, to continue our work on a water project while we continue our search for new Public Works Director. That position has been posted today. I know I spoke with all of you individually, so I wanted to make sure that you heard it from me first before we posted that position. I know Ryan has also told the Public Works Department as well, and they're aware. But yeah, so we wish Ryan well. He's done a lot of great work for us. We also have, I want to congratulate Mark Paris, who retired, as, as Tom alluded to, as lead mechanic last month. And, and Josh Oresko, who had been assistant mechanic, has been promoted to the new lead. So we are looking for an assistant mechanic. So if anyone knows anyone who might be interested, please have them apply to the Town of Portland. We also have a new Highway Division Truck Driver due to a retirement or resignation, and that's Joseph Mullin. He's doing a great job so far. That's a great hire. So I want to welcome Joe to the Public Works Department. And I'm not sure if I mentioned this previously, but we have a new tax collector, a collector of revenue. Cindy Ganna retired at the end of August, and we have hired Michelle Nun, and, or Noon, I should say. And she comes from the town of Killingworth. She was the collector of revenue in Killingworth. So the next time you pay your taxes, introduce yourself. Michelle is very nice, and we welcome her to the Town of Portland. And we also have a new CEO. I think you may have seen Henry at some of the Brainerd Place meetings. He got his feet wet. I guess he got his whole, whole body wet right away with Brainerd Place. So we welcome Henry. He's doing a great job so far. And the Senior Center has a new administrative assistant that is Heather Solinsky. So there's a new administrative assistant over there. So the next time you're at the Senior Center, say hi. And last week, I had the pleasure of swearing in our 12th, what will be our 12th police officer. I know John and Sean were here to, to, to join in, in the celebration. That is Michael Parati. Michael is a Portland resident. He lives here with his wife and, and son. And he will be spending the next six months at the Connecticut Post Academy, getting certified for police work. So in six months, he'll, he'll start his training here in Portland. But that, as I mentioned, brings us up back to 12 officers, which is where we want to be. And as you know, in the budget, we have a 13th officer that's budgeted for January 1 of 2025. So I know our captain is looking to fill that position in the new year as well. But we did get hit hard by a lot of retirees. So it's good to see our police department getting back up to full staffing. The water project, I want to just update you on that. We had a call with GZA this morning, and the monitoring wells to be installed with the production well are scheduled to begin on October 21st. So in just a short time, you're going to be drilling those monitoring wells. There's nine in total. And we're still waiting on an official date for the production well drilling, but that will be coming soon. And the DPW will be making an access path to the area. So there'll, there'll be some activity at the Portland Rent Complex in the days ahead. So look for that. The RFP for a developer for Brownstone Avenue has been sent out. That is currently open. So if you have anyone who may be interested in that parcel, there, there may be a developer in the audience that might, you know, want to continue working with the Town of Portland. Who knows? But that is available, and we're excited about that. That's a, that's a good property. And the bar grant. So now that that RFP is out, I'm working on the RFQ RFP for a consultant to assist with the $200,000 planning grant that the town received. So with that, we'll be doing an RFQ RFP for a consultant. So look for that coming soon. And our planner, Dan Beray, is working on the RFQ RFP. Though on calls, East Hampton's engine, which they were so kind to loan us, will stay at Company Two for an additional week. And then next week, on Tuesday, October 15th, there's going to be a little bit of a celebration at Company Two Picnic Grounds. You're all invited to a dinner. I believe it's at 8:00 PM on Tuesday, October 15th, with both the Town of Portland and the Town of East Hampton Fire Departments.
Yes, that's correct, Ryan. 8 o'clock.
Thank you, Sean. I want to point out that the Fire Department Pancake Breakfast are back. The first one is this Sunday, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Company One. So I hope to see you all there. The election is coming up. Obviously, it's November 5th. As you know, absentee ballots are available now in the town clerk's office. There are FAQ guides for both of the bonding referendum questions on the town website right now. And we encourage all residents, if there's any questions, please reach out to Board of Selectmen members, email me. I, we really do want to get questions out, but we also have to be careful what we, we can't advocate one way or the other. We just have to get facts out. So if there are questions, please, please reach out. The Jobbs Pond Project is, is nearing its conclusion. The pump will be turned off on Friday. After, it was a very successful project. The water level is down from the pump, seven feet. It's down almost 12 feet, I believe, overall, from, from where this started. So it was a terrific success. We're looking forward to having Breezy Corners back open again, as well as the Airline Trail. That should happen on Monday, October 14th. So I want to thank all the residents for their patience while we had to shut that road and the airline trail down for that project. I am told that the Nordic Spa will be breaking ground in less than a month. I think I shared that, but I just want to make sure that you all know that. And I did hear from EverSource today, or yesterday, that Starbucks building will be energized next week. Is, is it, that's what they're saying. So, and I'm told that Building E shouldn't be too far behind. That's what they're saying.
Yeah, Building E was supposed to come first, and then it was that. So it's all supposed to go down at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good update.
Okay, thank you. And Halloween on Main is October 25th, from 4:00 PM to 6:30 PM. So I want to put that on your radar as well. Those are my updates. Do you also have updates?
Just a few things.
Okay. If there's no other update, we'll move to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience? Okay. Let's see. Is there anyone online? Alright, there's no public comment. We'll move to Board of Selectmen general informal discussion.
So I just had one comment. Portland Fair this weekend was fantastic. I was there exhibiting. I think Bobby was there before and after, setting up and cleaning up. So he was there for a couple extra days before and after. I think it was amazing. It was fantastic. Everyone I talked to loved it. It was a great size. I talked to Chris Cody and his wife and thanked them for what they did to allow that to happen. But it was just very positive. And it was great to see. And I think they've got their new home, and it can only get bigger and better from here. But it was fantastic. Loved it.
Yeah, it, it looked, it looked great over there. And, and thankfully too, we got a nice treat of the weather. I will say, it was nice to walk on the fairgrounds and not have to wear boots. So.
It was nice to be able to feel my toes.
I just have one thing. We set the dates for the annual food drive in November. It's going to be Sunday, the 10th. We're going to be dropping off the bags. And Sunday, the 17th, we will be picking them up. And I did post that also on Facebook.
And thank you, Sean, to your family for continuing to do that as well. It's a great, a great charity every year. And I saw this Cub Scouts helping.
Yeah.
They are. So great. Let's look forward. If there's nothing else, we don't have anything on the follow-up items this evening. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn into, or to move into executive session and invite developer Dan Bertrum.
I make a motion, we move into executive session and invite Dan Bertrum.
Okay. And the purpose, as I mentioned, is the fixed assessment agreement at Brainerd Place. So there's a motion, you seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So at 7:32, we'll move to executive session. And this concludes the public portion of the evening. There's no action item taken tonight. So at the end of the executive session, we'll make a motion to adjourn and we'll leave at that. So thank you all for, for watching, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.